Yeah, good to go. But you're enjoying this weather, aren't you?
Yeah.
Ninety-five.
That's nice one.
Yeah.
It feels like fall today.
It does.
Good breeze.
All right, it is six thirty Monday, August the twenty-fifth. Let the City Council regular meeting agenda come to order. Please rise and indicate your pledge of allegiance.
Father God in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, purpose is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. We just not temptation, but deliverance for evil. Orange the kingdom and the power and glory forever, amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, every being, just one.
I see we have comments on JDI.
Okay, Dee Latimer Berry, Tupac Street, Grantville, Georgia. My comments regarding the budget. I went to City Hall several times to get information and answers to questions regarding the proposed budget, utility bills, and record requests. On August eighteenth, when I requested documents listed on my records request that I filed on August thirteenth, I was told to come back on August twenty-first. When I returned, the documents were incomplete. There were missing a retirement plan and the IGA agreement. After meeting with the city manager on August eighteenth regarding how utility bills and the reason why commercial rates are charged for residential home, I was unable to get these issues resolved. I have reviewed the proposed budget and had many questions regarding the budget. Some of these questions are, number one, is more staff being requested? If so, for what department? Number two, why is a column missing on the budget that would show the previous period and the percent of the budget used? Number three, the cost of living has increased two point five percent. Why is it being requested a five percent pay increase for staff? Plus a dollar per hour? Number four, why is such a large amount included in the retirement account? It's over a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Who is retiring? Number five, why is the police department budget so high? Their budget is one half of total city budget. Why is the fee schedule missing from the budget? Number seven, why is the salary for the city manager over a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars? Number eight, who is receiving the seventy-five thousand dollars for building and zoning? Number nine, why is there a contract for trash collection? And a cost for salary, employee salary, plus the benefits, plus retirement? Why both? And the following, number ten, there is one point three million dollar shortage of revenue. There's accounts listed for transfers to make up for that shortage, but there's no revenue from the federal seized funds or the drug funds. Answers to the above questions are needed for an informed decision committed by Dee Latimer Berry, Council Post One, Chair, Council Streets and Public Works Committee. And this is a copy for the City Clerk to include with the minutes. Thank you.
All right, motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval of minutes, City Council submitting minutes, July twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five, and the City Council work session this August eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Drive a motion. My turn. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. It's these questions.
All right. Robbie, Ms. Higgins?
The other seven minutes?
No.
We got a vote.
Okay, I didn't hear that. Thank you. Yes, sir. The decision on resolution number twenty twenty-five dash fourteen to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Hold on, we can't talk unless we have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay.
Discussion. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I had some questions. I had several questions. And I'm wondering if I can get some answers to some of those for all of them, if possible.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. My first one, is more staff being requested than so for what department?
Uh, no more staff is being requested than is normally requested.
So the same number as the last year, I mean this year?
I believe we have one additional staff in Public Works, and we have one additional, I think, in the City Clerk's office.
Another City Clerk.
What is the City Clerk?
No, I said one for the City Clerk.
Yes.
What position is that?
Uh, we're, we basically just have it as a position, admin position.
So we have a City Clerk, we have a Deputy Clerk, we have a Records Clerk.
It's a clerk, it's someone who works in the clerk's office. Where they do all kinds of things. Like take utility payments, take payments for business licenses, et cetera, et cetera.
Additional admin help.
Correct.
So does that mean that we are gonna ask someone there on Friday?
No.
Okay, number two. The way the budget is set up is kind of weird. Um, it doesn't, it's not set up by the actual departments that we have it. We have four departments according to our charter, but the budget's not set up that way. Plus, there's a column missing that shows the previous period and the percent of the budget that was used. So you can know at any given point whether you, you know, you're short or you're okay.
We never show the percentage of the budget used in the budget. We basically, we have that when we have the audit every year. If you want to go back and look at the actual expenditures, it's in the audit. The budget is a budget, it's not actual expenditures. And we've never had that column.
Well, we used to receive periodic financial reports that showed the actual budget, what is used, whether it's over, under, or okay. But we don't get that anymore. So how are we supposed to know what's being asked is compares with what was in the previous budget, the current budget? There's no way to figure that out.
Well, you have the previous budget and you have the newly requested budget.
But how you know, you know what the budget is, but you don't know what percent of that you use? So.
But again, it's, okay.
It's hard to find one. So it's hard to figure that out. Number three, the cost of living went up two point five percent nationwide. But it's my understanding from the city manager from the last meeting that it's you requesting a five percent pay increase, plus each employee gets an extra dollar per hour increase.
So the two point five percent you're using is called the CPI.
Yeah.
The CPI is called core inflation rate. Two of the items that are left out of CPI, and I know this intrinsically from quite a college, you're getting a degree in economics. The CPI does not include food nor energy. Stupidest thing I've ever heard. So the two and a half percent inflation rate is a bogus number. Food and energy, gasoline and what you pay at the grocery store is not included in the CPI. I promise you, those have gone up. So a five percent raise, considering the inflation rate, is minimal in my book.
So. Most cities are using the cost of living to give increases.
Do you have examples of that?
Except, granted.
You have examples of other cities using the CPI?
We've always used the CPI.
No, we haven't always used the CPI.
We've always used the CPI, which is a good indication of what's, what is fair and what should be, what should be.
Fair is to pay the people who work very hard in the city a decent wage. So they'll continue to stay with us and work hard in the city for their neighbors. And they work very hard. I challenge anyone that comes to spend a day, go out and cut grass for the afternoon.
Well, uh, when I was working for the federal government, it was always the CPI, that was the increase we got every year. And that was just kind of standard. So I just thought it was kind of strange that we're doubling that, like we, you know, got deep pockets or something, but anyway. Number four, why is there such a large amount included in retirement accounts? Over a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Who is retiring? Why do we need that much money?
I'm not certain what account you're talking about. Can you identify the page that that's on? We don't have a retirement account. Yes, why are you getting?
You have an account that says retirement.
Where?
Under each department, you have retirement.
That's what's budgeted to be put into retirement.
Into the retirement account. So why is it so high? Why is so much being put in there?
Number one, we're increasing the amount that we're putting into the retirement accounts, bringing it to a level that's comparable with other cities. And number two, we're going to get the employees to retire. I'm not gonna have Boots, who's worked twenty-five years with the city, retire and not have some form of retirement from the city of grit?
So that's not high, a high figure?
Not at all.
To anticipate people retiring? Okay, number five. And the reason why the police department budget is so high?
Because we have an excellent police department.
One half of the city, one half of the budget is for police.
Correct.
Number six. There's reference in the budget about a fee schedule. There's not, the fee schedule is missing from, well, it's from, from the documents that I was given by the City Clerk's office. There's no fee schedule.
The fee schedule was never a part of the budget.
It makes reference to a fee schedule and a list and amount so that there's figures that back that up, but it's missing. Number seven, why is the salary for the city manager over a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars? I think he was.
I'm not certain that that is the amount. Where are you, where are you getting that from?
Well, it's spread throughout. City manager, certain amount.
Okay, so when you, when you look at what an employee is.
Certain amount.
Okay, so when you look.
Add them all up, it's a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars.
When you look at what an employee is being paid, there is the salary, okay? And then there's the cost of the benefits, health insurance, et cetera. You generally can say, here's the salary, add fifty percent. That's the benefits on top. With health insurance, everything else. So when we have to budget for individual employees, we can't just look at salary. We also have to budget for those costs of health, benefits, et cetera.
In the budget, the salaries, this is separate from benefits. So if I add the benefits on that, it'd probably be double. Double a hundred thirty-five thousand. So that is my question, why is that so high?
Well, number one, I'm not really sure where you extrapolate the city manager's salary. In each department, we spread everybody working in each department across that department salary-wise. So there's no individual item in here that says city manager salary?
If you're looking at six times, it's just his CM, city manager's salary, it's listed six times in six different places. When you take it and add it all up.
I don't believe it's ever listed individually.
It says city manager. You know, if you, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of hard when you're expecting council members to take a little tablet and do everything on a tablet, not give them a packet. But I asked for a packet. I go, but I get it after the meeting. I have to pay for it.
Okay, very good. And we continue on the questions on budget points.
And then I can read through the pages. And if you want a list of every page that this city manager shows up with a dollar amount behind it, I'll be glad to provide that to you because I have that in my notes. Number eight, who is receiving seventy-five thousand dollars for building and zoning?
Well, billing, uh, planning and zoning is run by Brennan.
Who?
Brennan.
The city engineer.
The city engineer.
That's the city engineer's salary, seventy-five thousand dollars.
That's what he's paying.
Okay. Number nine, there is an item in there, a contract for trash collection. Plus, there is an item in there for an employee's salary, plus benefits, plus retirement. Why is there both?
So we have in the City Clerk's office, every time someone calls in and says, I want bulk pickup. Well, we have to pay for that phone call. We have to pay for that person taking the information. Uh, they do all kind of work with garbage. You have to add SG and A cost of city employees into the cost of running the trash business.
Okay, my last question that I had on this sheet, I had any more. I just reduced it to this few. You know. Uh, there's one point three million dollar shortage of revenue. And the list on accounts that you're gonna draw from to bring up that shortage so you have a balanced budget. But there's no revenue coming in from federal seized funds or drug funds. How much did we get for that? Or why is there none listed?
I don't believe we have any money.
To balance the shortage.
In the budget, coming from that? I don't believe we collected any last year, did we, Chief? No, therefore, there's nothing there.
No funds were seized and there was nothing that went into the drug funds, so that was a zero. Well, there's a page in the budget that says it was, there was a figure, but then it said it went in and went out. But it's not.
Years, years past, we might have collected something, but we did last year, therefore, we're not gonna budget it. We're gonna collect anything this year.
So why is it in this budget? Why is it in this budget? It's listed as.
Well, you've got, it's in the back part of the budget. There are pieces in the back part that really don't pertain to this.
Fifty thousand dollars, there's fifty thousand dollars that went in and went out for federal seized funds. And there's fifty thousand dollars for the drug fund that went in and went out. So there was nothing left to assist with this shortage of one point three million dollars.
We don't anticipate any drug fund seizures that is coming here. Correct. That's what a budget is, it's a forward-looking figure. It'll be great if we have some, but we can't count on it.
So last year, there was none?
Nope.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, all in favor of adoption of the budget? Raise, say aye.
Aye.
Abstained. I don't have enough information.
Okay. All right. Robbie?
Yes, sir. The next item is the decision on the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-five oh nine, regulating parking on city property.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Okay, anything else on this?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, um, there was some complaints in the community in that specifically that I'm aware of. And I believe you got an email from Elder Hines regarding the church not being able, not wondering why the street beside the church, there's no parking. So I didn't quite, you responded, I didn't quite understand your answer.
Number one, we're, we're, there's a, there's a existing parking ordinance that listed various parking issues. This, the primary thing we're addressing with adding up to and making this one new is city parking downtown. So when it came to church parking, funeral parking. It doesn't matter. People can park for church. The police can decide to enforce or not to enforce. And the police have already said, we're not going to enforce if someone's parking on the side of the street or on this, during a church service or a funeral service. So it's just business as usual.
Well, I, I think your answer kind of said it was, it's, it's up to the discretion of the police department. You have the law in the books. The law does not say that, that. It doesn't say it in the law.
All enforcement of laws are up to the discretion of law enforcement officers.
So they could either give you a ticket or not. If they, if you're doing something wrong, breaking the law, they can decide whether or not to ticket you.
Have you ever get caught speeding on the interstate? Police officer says, I'm gonna give you a warning this time? There you go.
Well, I think that, you know, that, that, you know, the people that I talked to, that they said that if, if they're not gonna be giving people tickets at the church, why are they even putting this on the books? So.
It's been, exactly.
But this law, this law said, when I read it, it said they're gonna be posting signs. Signs are gonna be posted. But if they're in lack of a sign, does that mean that if you say, well, I didn't see a sign, then that's, that's nothing that they're gonna be concerned about? Because, well, this is the law. Regardless of whether we put a stop, a no parking sign, this is the law. So I'm writing you this ticket. So it's at the discretion of the police department whether they're gonna go out and put up signs. But if they don't put up signs and they give tickets, they can always say, well, the law says that we can still ticket you whether or not we put a sign up or not. So this is very confusing. Are signs gonna be put up?
No.
No signs are gonna be put up? And then you're saying that no tickets are gonna be given, no cards are gonna be told from the churches? Why even put that street on there? There's nothing else on that street but, but the church.
It's been on there. We didn't, we didn't change any of that. But that's been there. That's not even what we're discussing right now.
So why was it even brought up? Why wasn't it even mentioned?
You brought it up.
You brought it up, we didn't bring it up.
This, that section.
I don't even know who put this on the agenda.
That section that you're talking about has been on there, on the books since the nineties. The part that we were discussing changing has more to do with, like, people parking sideways in parking spots and holding up multiple spots downtown. The part that you're talking about has been enforced the same way since the nineties. That's, that's not changing, that wasn't changing.
So it's at the discretion of the police department whether or not we come out of church and our car is gone, been towed away because it's on Roger Arnold Street. And this, and this includes also the other church, John Wesley. What's that church street that goes, passes by the other church? That is kind of a narrow street? That one is listed too. Two, two churches. Two, two churches predominate.
Okay, but let's put it right. This has been on the books for over twenty years. So this is nothing new. The only piece we're adding to this is regulating downtown city parking. Okay? All right. All in favor?
Opposed.
Okay.
No.
Robbie?
Okay. The next item is a decision on the second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash ten to regulate nuisance and malicious noise.
Okay, and from, basically, that's adding on to the current noise ordinance. That's what we discussed where if someone is maliciously creating noise, and it happens from time to time, you're having car engines when people tell you, not to things like that. But the police now have an enforcement mechanism to do so. I'm sorry, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. So whatever I just said, can I? Any more discussion?
Abstained.
Hold on, we're in boot. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
Okay.
All right, the next item is discussion on the first reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twelve to amend the Gmail's defined benefit retirement plan adoption agreement. Article two, section fifteen, retirement benefit computation.
Can we be quiet in the audience, please?
B one A's flat percentage formula to two percent of final average earnings vice one percent.
Okay. It's a discussion tonight. Any discussion on this?
I don't know if you can hear me, my phone, microphone fell apart. Um, this is a document that I went to the City Clerk's office to ask for and it, and it was missing from my, so I had not had the chance to look at this retirement plan to see how much increase it's gonna be given for people who retired, who you're saying nobody's retiring. So we, you know, we don't, we're increasing the amount they're gonna get, but we don't know who's supposed to be retiring. This is kind of, doesn't make much sense. But anyway, this item was missing from the packet that I requested. So I don't, I can't even, I couldn't even look it over, but it gives a little bit of information about this increase in the amount that they will get, percent that they will get when they retire, percent of their salary.
Okay, yes.
So you.
But right now, we have no one, this doesn't impact, I mean, no one is retiring right at the moment on this. This is, this is a brand-new piece that has come in on the defined benefit adoption plan that, that is being put forward. This is not us from the city necessarily. This is part of GM EBS defined benefits.
So this is similar to the percent that other cities are giving to their employees when they retire, is what you're saying? This is what this surrounding city's comparable size is giving, the percent it's giving for. Percent of final average earnings is doubling it. Is that what it's doing? Instead of one percent, it's gonna be two percent? I, I couldn't. I don't know why this was missing from the documents that I requested, but I, I don't have anything to look at and compare with or read or do any research. So that's why I'm asking the question.
Okay.
But is that what it's doing? Instead of one percent now that they, when someone retires, it's gonna be two percent, two percent of their salary.
Final average earnings of two percent versus one percent.
One percent.
Okay.
And who put this on the agenda?
Uh, Mr. Greshaver put it on the agenda as we were required to.
Okay.
Okay. Robbie?
Yes, sir. The next item on the agenda is a decision on the award of a contract in the amount of two hundred fifty-four thousand eighty-seven dollars to Brayland and Associates, Inc., to construct six pickleball courts at ninety-two Post Street.
Drive a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, anything else on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
Okay.
The next item is a decision on the authorization agreement for year twenty twenty-six, annual subscription under the supplemental powers of my policy with MEAC power and for the mayor to execute the agreement.
Drive a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, sir. The next item is a decision on the letter of engagement with Gerald G. Pentecost to conduct the fiscal year twenty twenty-five audit.
Drive a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I have a question.
Okay.
What is the amount?
Of what?
It's a letter of agreement with, with the auditor. What, for how much?
Twenty-nine thousand five hundred.
Twenty-nine thousand five hundred. And what was it? Is this the same or higher or what?
The same.
The same as last year?
Yes.
And when can we expect the audit to be presented? When will we get it?
After March thirty-first.
After March?
It's due by March thirty-first.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
The next item is a decision on the intergovernmental agreement, the IGA with Maryland County Tax Commissioner to collect property tax on behalf of the city rent bill for annexed parcels.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Question.
Question?
Okay.
Uh, this was the other item that was missing from the documents I, I asked for in my records request, so I've not been able to look at this. So I'm, I'm, I'm going to have to abstain on this one because I have not had a chance to look at this agreement.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay.
The next item on the agenda is the discussion on expanding qualifications for appointment to citizen volunteer committees to include Planning and Zoning Commission, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, Historic Preservation Commission, and the Beautification Advisory Board.
Okay, so this is a discussion tonight, and we had brought it up in the last work session. Because to, to explain again, you, you all will agree to do these, but you weren't here, so I want to explain. We actually have to make this change in five different codes. And Mr. Mitchell, explain for planning and zoning what we have to do, which is different.
So, uh, the qualification for membership on the planning commission is set out in the zoning ordinance, as is typical for other cities. Uh, so in order to make this revision to those membership qualifications for the planning commission, it will require that we amend the zoning ordinance. To amend the zoning ordinance, uh, first that has to go before the planning commission. Uh, it has to be advertised in the newspaper, there's got to be a public hearing. Uh, so there are a number of steps that have to be taken for that specific one, uh, in order to make those revisions.
So, I mean, we can, we can go through that one, but I also want to kind of add, the more I have thought about that particular item, I'd like for that to remain a citizen of Grantville, to be on our planning and zoning. Uh, the others, I, I can freely see why we should, can expand. But I think planning and zoning, we need to keep that as is. Any comments on that?
I think, Mr. Mayor, um, I think that we should. We should not be opening our boards and commissions up for non-residents. We have enough people in this community to be able to put people on these boards. And as I had asked in the past, if, if it would be set up so that each council member would be, would be responsible for finding volunteers or getting, bringing volunteers forward and then to feel that when you bring a volunteer forward, that person would, would be accepted. But that hasn't been happening. And I, I made recommendations for several good candidates and people who've lived in the city a long time and very qualified, and they were passed over. So the problem is not that we don't, we're having a hard time finding them. It's like when you bring people forward and their expectations are that they're going to be appointed and they don't get appointed. And that needs to stop because it's not, I don't think it's, it's very encouraging. We need to treat our board and commission members better. And then they will be proud, they'll be probably, you know, running over each other trying to get appointed if we treat them better and if we give them more respect and, and they can feel proud to be a part of our administration. So I think we need to start looking at the way we're treating our, you know, our commissioners and our board and giving them support and giving them funding. Because I'm looking at this budget and there's nothing earmarked for the boards and commissions. You know, if you've got five boards, you should have, there should be five entries in there. So what they're, what, how are you going to fund their activities? But that's not in it. So that's our problem.
Funding, where do you have the funding for that activities? What do you mean by that?
I mean, if, if they, if you have a committee and they don't even have a budget for, you know, uh, supplies or a budget for staff support or a budget for training or whatever, that need, that, that needs to be aligned on in the budget and so that they don't have to scramble around for everything that they need. That's a problem. So we need to look at the way we're, we're treating them and that the recognition we're giving them and the support we're giving them. And then we'll get people to volunteer.
So citizen volunteer boards will have no fiduciary capability whatsoever. They're not going to have a budget where they can decide where to spend what. That's just not going to happen. That is controlled within the council and controlled within the staff of the city. Uh, so that's a, a no-go on that. As far as, as, as us picking people, I mean, right now, there's not a single board, with the exception of planning and zoning, that can meet. There's not enough members. And we have probably siphoned for twenty-five different people since I haven't even been there of, of, of these. So, and I don't want to, like we talked about, I don't want to be responsible for going to find someone. I've tried hard and there's just, we just don't have anybody wanting to step up. So I think we should expand for those others, with the exception of planning and zoning, to go into people who have an interest in Grantville. Let's be clear, whether they're in, if they own property in Grantville, if they live in a Grantville address that's not in the city, they have an interest.
Yeah, if they own a business in Grantville, they have an interest.
Correct.
I mean, no business owner.
They want it to flourish.
Yeah, no business owner is going to hurt their city and they have a business in it.
With these advisory boards, there are, and they, they advise us. So do you want to say that you want people advising you that don't even live in the city, don't even vote? Well, I.
As long as they own a business or own property, yeah.
They have an interest in the city to make it better.
I mean, just like I said, nobody's going to build a business in Grantville and not have an interest at the business, that the city did not flourish.
And we do get final say. And we still get to a point whether or not, so if somebody comes from somewhere, wherever, we decide we don't think that they're good fit. We still get the final say, so it's not like we're just blindly allowing anybody to join the board.
Well, I, I listen, I pay attention to the, to the people that live in this community and that, the voters, the people that put me in office, that's who I listen to. So you're talking about people that have businesses or developers or whoever the heck you're talking about? No, they don't have a say-so and I don't feel that they have any influence on me. You know, I don't even accept any donation from people unless they live in the city. If they want, donate to me. I'm not looking for ways to get money from the outside to run.
Hang on a second.
To, to run for office?
That, that sounds a little bit like an accusation and it's almost like, like, none of us are making any money off of any of this.
Have you read the newspaper?
What happened?
What the mayor said. Ask the mayor how he feels about that.
About what?
A way for non-residents who donate to his campaign.
Page where I'm going to have people who, I live in high school, who want to send me a little money to help my campaign? Absolutely. 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 Because they want to help me.
Well, I'm paying attention to the people that live in the city and that's who I serve.
I also get donations from people who live in the city as well.
Well, those are the ones that I look for.
Okay, so do I.
For support and for encouragement, so. But I think this is a bad policy. I don't know who put, who's putting this on here and it's unnecessary and it's not needed. If you just let the, we're the elected officials and we, there are people that we feel would be of good service to, to this community that want to serve. I've got at least five or six people that I put forward and they gave me applications and, and they turned it down because they said, don't forget it. Then I'm, I'm not going to take that kind of treatment and abuse. So we need to stop what we're doing. Well, they're, for one thing, they were looking at the way that the former Parks and Rec. Board members were treated. They're looking at the way the former Parks and Rec Board members were treated. They looked at that and they said, my goodness, what's, what's going on with that? That was terrible. So that those people should, you know, I, I feel sorry for them, but we need to look at the way we're treating people with respect and dignity and giving them the support that they need. And, and listen, if they're the advisory board, then, you know, ask them, what is your opinion? When we get ready to do something, instead of just doing it and ignoring them.
We beat this one to death. All right, let me ask the one question because Mr. Mitchell has work to do. We don't even have this as an item yet because all these codes have to be written. Do, do you concur that planning and zoning should be exempt from this or not? Do you think, do you want us to put it on the agenda?
I think they all should be taken off. Um, we shouldn't put any of them on there.
We know what your opinion is.
Okay.
Do, do you want us to press forward and do the planning and zoning with everything we have to do?
Definitely no. If you're going to take them one by one, my answer on that one is no.
Yeah, I mean, we can revisit it if we change our minds and we have issues with it.
I can agree with that.
Okay. So Mr. Mitchell, prepare for the other four, where you will not include planning and zoning in this. Prepare the ordinances. It'll take us two months, so.
I'll have those prepared for a first reading in your next campaign.
All right.
Okay. The next item is a decision on the special event permit application by the Grantville Juana's for the annual Saint Jude Walkathon to be held September the sixth, twenty twenty-five at eight AM and to set a rain date of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and with that, the business of the evening, the evening's business is concluded, we're adjourned.